But 64 is enough. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, all the housekeeping motions are still in order, but I need one more. I need a motion so that should we not finish our business tonight? We will reconvene June 10th. You heard me, June 10th is the earliest we can do it. So please be, you know, succinct in your discussions tonight. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Frank, you're outvoting. Well, we've gotten through all our financial articles. So we have a general articles, Article 30, we're going to start with. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to have its elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk, submitted by the Select Board. Does the Select Board have anything to say on this? Did you ever vote?
Thank you. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor of this.
We did. I thought we voted on it.
My bad, we never voted on it.
You may be...
We didn't. Personally think it's a great idea to do this. You have to make that decision. I believe it's not a vote tonight, it's a discussion, correct? So it's no different than when we had Brian Curtin there, and we moved over and we got Mr. Genio in the spot. It's a very, very tough job. For Amy, there's a million things that she could get up here and tell you about this position, so your choice.
Ms. Warfield, would you care to speak on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Amy Warfield. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the current town clerk. And for those of you who don't know, I am planning on retiring sometime next year. Prior to the end... I appreciate the sentiment. Prior to the end of my elected term. I have not set a date yet, but your position tonight on this article will be a factor that will play into that decision. I have been working collaboratively with the Select Board, soliciting their input and getting comments and putting, before we brought anything to town meeting. They did decide at their strategic planning meeting to put this question before town meeting, which is what is required by mass general law. What you're doing tonight is voting to put the question to the voters in the April election of 2025. For those of you who say, "I can't retire," I'm going to say, "It's been a privilege to serve with you. I must be doing something right," because probably most of you, from one time to another, we've probably disagreed on what my comment was, or what I said we were going to do, or whatever, but you all respected that decision, so I appreciate that. Why am I doing this? Well, again, because it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and work for the town. It's time for me to go on and spend some time with my family and enjoy some of my, some more free time. I was actually thinking of retiring back at the end of my term, which was in 2021. And then, like most people's lives, COVID hit. There were too many disruptions in town operations, like shutdowns, town meetings on football fields, which I'd be very glad to run another one of those, I loved that, and also dealing with hybrid or partial hybrid or remote meetings. So COVID delayed lots of activities, or several activities, that I really wanted to get done, accomplished in the office before retiring. So why this article now? Well, my retirement offers the town a unique opportunity. As I said, I've been working with the Select Board on this and going through the steps. There is no clear successor in the wings. I have tried and poked and prodded for a number of people, and so right now, that's where we're at. While this position has been elected for 200 years, the responsibility of the town clerk has dramatically changed in even just the past five or six years, with the number of changes in election law that keeps happening, the complexity of the election laws, the responsibility of overseeing, and the complexity of FOIA requests, which require the balancing of public rights-to-know while keeping confidentiality when allowed. The fact that we are a very busy office with vital records. We have a wonderful employer and facility in town in Leahy Clinic, but they do keep us busy with a lot of vital records requests, a lot of vital records to process. And then also processing the constant procession of developers and lawyers, which we love, and the continued development in town makes Burlington a very unique place to work and be town clerk for. And the nearly constant changes with technology. This coming year, we're going to be changing over three of the state systems that we work with, and so all of these things are very complex and take a lot more than just having someone win an election. So let me just talk, too, about in comparison to other towns that surround us. These are what we often consider our comparable towns. They've come up in your comparisons that are in the back of your book, also in things we do when we look at salaries and that kind of stuff. And in comparison to these towns, you can see that the list of people that now have appointed town clerks are quite, is quite longer than those who are still working with elected, appointed town clerks. The problem is with this question is there is no right or wrong answer. Each one of these decisions has risks and benefits. And perhaps my staff and I have done a disservice to the town by making all of what we do very, look simple and easily accomplished, but a lot of times, they'll tell you, "We are looking like ducks." And in case you don't know that analogy, if you ever watch a duck on water, it seems to be sliding across the top of the water. Well, meanwhile, the demands and the complexities of getting across a pond, the duck's feet are furiously paddling underneath, and that's what our job is a lot of times. Let me walk through or just show you. I didn't get this printed out, but I'd be glad to email it to anybody who wants it. Here is kind of a chart of the pros and cons with elected and appointed. And as you can see, elected positions are usually won by people who know the town or are known in town. They have passion for the town, and they will know the players who are in town. But some of the problems with the elected position for a clerk is that they may not know the fundamentals of the town clerk job. They may need to learn a lot of legal requirements, and they need to be able to sometimes be a bad guy to their friends and neighbors, as many of you, when we've had discussions or disagreements on how I thought things should be done. And so it takes a lot of personal courage to say, "This is what I'm going to do, this is what I, what we need to do," and to stand behind it. Now, an appointed clerk, that would no longer be required to be a Burlington resident or run for election. But what we can do at that point is that we can set up what are the requirements for the town clerk in Burlington. Most appointed clerks are required to have at least completed one or two of the certificates that either come from the state or from, come from the International Clerk Association. So we would pick somebody that has experience as a town clerk, or at least an assistant town clerk in a town, and has a lot of the complexities that Burlington has. May not have all of them, but will have some of them. Also, the fact that if we, with an appointed clerk, we are choosing someone who, if they have been a clerk or an assistant clerk, they have connections with other clerks in the Commonwealth. This is one of the greatest resources that being a clerk has, and I've spent hours and hours being a mentor to new clerks, new clerks that were elected into smaller towns, as well as clerks that were appointed, that were shifting over from a town that maybe didn't have as much technology as the town that they're now going to. So these are kind of some of the pros and cons. The con for an appointed clerk is you will get somebody that may not know Burlington as well as those of us here in the room do. But someone who has passion to be a clerk will spend the time to get to know you and will be able to work and be a resource. They're employed, they would be appointed by the Select Board, if that's the way we word the article, and that they would be in close contact with people like the town administrator, the assistant town administrator, and work very closely with the other department heads. But that may still be that they have to learn those people and get to know them and those types of things. So again, all these points play into your decision. Like I said, there is no clear right decision. Instead, this is an opportunity for you to decide which risks you're willing to take and which benefits you're willing to benefit from. And that's what this warrant article is all about.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to update the body, the discussion. Amy approached myself and the Select Board with this months ago about her concerns about the future of the position. I know those of you that have been around understand how blessed we've been. I've worked with Amy and our prior town clerk, Jane Chu, who have just done an exceptional job. When Amy brought this to the Board, I think that it's, she's just really concerned about the future of the position. And from a Select Board standpoint, they wish to submit this article so that we could hear some feedback from town meeting members as to what you think about this. They're all, it's not necessary to vote this this evening, we could certainly bring it back in September. I know that the Board is willing to have a public hearing on this sometime this summer to have an open house and hear what residents have to say about this. And again, it's a, it's a really tough position to fill. If you think about it, we've been very, very lucky to have such efficient election officials over the years. You want to have somebody who's excited about politics and elections but's not political? I mean, I've been working with Amy for years, and I couldn't tell you what her political affiliation is. I mean, that's a really hard person to find, who's excited about those things but is not necessarily political themselves. From a pros standpoint, on an elected clerk, I know one of the things that people like about an elected clerk is the independence factor, right? So there may be a perception that, you know, a clerk could be influenced by a Select Board or a town administrator, whoever they report to. I would say that that's more of a perception than a reality, but, you know, that is definitely the way some people feel. They like the independence of an elected clerk that reports to the voters. On the pros side of an appointed clerk, I do think that we offer an attractive position where we may be able to find an experienced candidate from another community. As Amy indicated, the position looks quite simple, because they make it look simple, but there's a lot of intricacies to the laws, and there's a lot that goes into running an election and vital records and all the other duties of the position. So I think from that standpoint, an appointed clerk, you could get somebody that's experienced and can get up and running quickly. For some reason, if that person wasn't doing their job sufficiently, you could appropriately discipline them and remove them from the position. But again, we did this recently with the town treasurer position several years ago. I think that one was a little bit more clear-cut, that you want the person that's managing hundreds of millions of dollars to sort of be in a pointed position if possible. I mean, our incumbent had done a good job for many years, but I think this one's a little bit more of a jump ball or a judgment call. So I know from the Board's standpoint that they're looking to hear some feedback from town meeting members, hopefully tonight. And, you know, if you feel comfortable voting how you feel tonight, then certainly that's, that's, that's a possibility. But we can also bring it back in September after we've received more feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. So now we'll open this up to the body for comments, discussions, questions. Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. First of all, I'd like to give Amy kudos for all that she has done in the last several years. I have been a warden, working at the polls for many years. It's, sometimes I'm sure there are problems, but everything works out smoothly, and in the, in the end, it's important to have a professional at the charge and a professional staff, which Amy has. And I think that she is due a lot of kudos. We've had conversations about different things over the years, but I always respect her opinion and her, her fortitude whenever the, whenever different issues come up. I support this. I was a supporter of appointing the treasurer, and I think that in today's age, you know, you don't want someone to just become the town clerk, especially with a town the size and with everything going on in Burlington, someone who just wins a popularity contest. I think that it's important to have someone who has knowledge, and I hope everyone will vote to put this on the ballot next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willard. Further comments?
What we have before us doesn't establish what criteria the appointing authority has. I, I think that there's some criteria should be appointed, whether they have, you know, how many certifications, whether the pay is based upon certifications, and as they increase, get more pay, what kind of contracts are out there that other towns are using. I think there's a lot we have to learn and have in place before we put it on the ballot for the citizens. As Paul said, we can wait and gather that information before we have to make that decision, whether the, they want to do it in-house with their own human resources, or whether they want to appoint a committee of citizens. But I, I think that we should establish some criteria before we ask people to make a decision on this, and we could lay out what that criteria is. And I forgot to announce who I am, Jack Kelly, Precinct 7, sorry.
Back here, behind Pat. You, yes. Sorry, I can't...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mimi Bix Island, Precinct 1. First, I also want to start by thanking Amy. Amy, I so deeply respect you, and that's not something that comes out of my mouth often or easily, but since the day I met you, you've been nothing but warm, welcoming, helpful, and I wish you could stay in this position for many more years so that my daughter could get to know you, perhaps from, you know, this, this end of the aisle. But in any case, having said that, I also appreciate the write-up you did of the pros and cons, and I want to address a concern I have and kind of piggyback on what Mr. Kelly was saying about needing some criteria for a selection process, because as your write-up acknowledges, for both elected and appointed, one of the challenges is being, the individual being able to maintain a principled position even in the face of political pressure. And so I, so far I've heard the rationale that an appointed position could alleviate that concern, but actually, as a relatively newer member of this community, I, I have observed in what I view as, in some instances, not the most qualified individuals getting appointed. So I would want to know what kind of criteria there would be to make sure that if there was a group of candidates that the Select Board was evaluating, that there would be full transparency on any familial connections, marital connections, who these individuals are, and what the criteria would be for assessing their, their worthiness for the job. Thank you.
Ms. Norm, do you have a, have your hand up?
Becky Norm, Precinct 4. Mimi and Sally both said what I was going to say better. I'd like to understand if, it's not clearly, doesn't need to be in the article, but understand the hiring process better. The Select Board is by nature a political body, which could lead to this being a political position, whether we move forward with this or not. So like, concretely, I'm curious whether other towns have their Select Board or the equivalent appointees, or whether it's a responsibility of their town manager or administrator. Thank you.
Ms. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. ZY, Precinct 5. My first one is a question. How do we find Amy in the first place? Secondly, I just want to make a comment. I'm, I'm not sure I really support this article, because I think one of the recent Select Board appointment somewhat disappointing, that was a housing authority, if you all remember. So like Jack Kelly and Mimi mentioned, all the criteria and also transparency, like if this is, we're going to pass this, we, we need to have probably set up some, I don't even know, but I just think we need to know better. We need to learn better. And like, how we like monitor that, I'm not sure. But yeah, my, my biggest question is, how do we find Amy in the first place?
56 Skilton Lane, that's why you found, finding Amy. Mr. Eiler. There's no money involved, John.
Thank you, hopefully not. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. I didn't have time to make an amendment to require Amy to be town clerk for life, but you know, I, I think, you know, one big plus here is the ability to have a wider applicant pool. That's obviously a big win. But I would agree, there's a few unknowns with this, and, you know, having the criteria and have the selection process spelled out. One thing that we've all been assuming that isn't actually in this article is who gets to appoint the person. It just says appointed position. I'll propose myself. But I think we should spell that out. And I think that the biggest concern is the, the political influence issue. I think, you know, we've seen with state legislatures trying to influence election outcomes, you know, I think having a very small elected body that the clerk could repoint to is kind of a worrisome thing. So I would, I would personally want to see protection spelled out as to how this clerk would be free of influence, yet we're still able to get rid of them if we don't like them somehow. So something we had back in, it was back in January of 2020 that we had the article for a treasurer being appointed, and by the way, Gary's doing a great job, so that's a real plus there. But I think what I'd like to see before we would vote on this, which we did see when we had the treasurer position, is what set of bylaw changes are being proposed that would spell out the selection process, the how-to-get-rid-of-them process, the how-to-protect-them process. So right now, I think we're, I think it's too early to vote on something that's basically just a concept right now. I think we need to see a concrete proposal of what exactly are you putting into bylaws that would govern this whole process. So that would be my recommendation, is to have that before we vote.
Mr. Monaco, then I'll get Mr. Davison.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. All I really want to know is what's the best, I assume that the, the administration is open to tabling this for purposes of forum, information gathering, bylaw stuff, whatever, and I think that all really should happen, especially since this isn't super urgent. We can make it hap, how long does it take to get this through the state, would be one question? I assume we need state approval for this, and given that you're open to forums and whatnot, what's the best way to table this? We can't do a time certain, correct?
No, we cannot.
Right, so...
We can just vote to postpone.
Yeah, okay. So I am going to make a motion to postpone. So there you have it.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Yes, Ms. Nash.
Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. I support the motion to postpone because I think we've heard some very cogent reasons to know a little bit more before we vote, even though the fact remains that if we wish, we would only have a vote if we were hoping that we might be able to change the way government has done. And from the lists of towns that have changed to appointed positions, it makes sense for all the reasons Amy said. I've been in town meeting longer than most of you wish, but I have to say, there has never been a town clerk who has not been wonderful. But as Amy so brilliantly pointed out, when you have to figure out how to have an evening town meeting without it raining on you because of COVID, this is beyond any job description. What really worries me is the fact that we have a town that no longer has any viable newspapers. The Burlington buzz is pretty good, but when most of the town reporting comes from Facebook pages among town citizens, I know most of my neighbors have no idea who to vote for, they're always calling me and asking. And I think that when you have a vote like this, we need to have at least the opportunity for people to show up, perhaps get more information, so that when we have the vote, we aren't thrilled if we manage to get 21% of the people who can vote out to vote. So I would suggest postponing this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Is there anyone who wants to speak against postponing? All right, does someone still want to speak?
George Papianas, Precinct 2. This question's for Amy. In your statement that you made, you referenced some sort of a connection between when you retire and this vote. Did I understand that right? Did I hear that? And if so, could you speak to that timeline?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, just like I have promised my staff that I would not leave before the end of all the presidential election stuff, if, depending on when, if a decision was made and it was a clear-cut decision, I might leave a little bit earlier in 2025 than later. I don't have, again, I don't have a set date, but it's some, another thing that I don't want to leave the town in a position that is not advantageous for the town.
Anything further?
To the motion to postpone, oh, sorry, Dave Waddila, Precinct 1. What changes? What, what happens between now and, say, our next meeting when, when this comes up? Is there a specific group that's going to take this head-on? Or how, how is something different going to show up? Or how, how is something different going to show up on the board here? I don't know. It's not clear to me.
Mr. Sagarino, can, seems to me that would fall under the selectmen. I'll let you speak on it.
Thanks, Dave. I think what we will be able to provide in September, just to answer some of the questions, if it was an appointed position, would fall under the administrative and professional plan. That is where all the department heads fall and some of our middle managers and that sort of rules and regulations are on the human resources website, if you want to take a look at that. I think there should, should be a question as to who, who it's appointed to. For whatever reason, town meeting decided to have the treasurer position report to the select board as opposed to the town administrator. There's probably pros and cons of, of that as well. So I think if we came back in September, we would be able to provide a job description, the qualifications that other communities have, maybe some further information from those communities that have gone from elected to appointed recently. It's sort of a recent trend. I think years ago, most of the clerks were, were elected and over the past 10 years, I believe there's been a trend for the same reasons we talked about, expanding the candidate pool to more of an appointed clerk. But those are the things I think that if, if this was postponed, again, that was the select board's original intention, was to have a little discussion about this and, and hear what town meeting had to say, and then bring it back in September. And I think at that time, we could have a job description with qualifications in it and, you know, more information about sort of the experience of, experiences of other communities that have gone through this recently.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Does anyone have anything really to say about this? Mr. Sinessi?
Adam Sinessi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. I, I'm all in with everybody who wants to postpone this. One thing that I would ask, and it, I appreciate very much the way that, you know, the select board has addressed this and Mrs. Sagarino has approached this group. Would there be openness to, I know in the past, we've had a government review committee, and I don't think we need anything as big as that for this, but would there be openness to building some sort of committee that would, would essentially be the framework for a search committee, but it would possibly encompass, you know, a member of general bylaw review who can act as sort of a liaison between your committee and town meeting to just codify everything, to make this at least as smooth as possible when it comes back to us?
Mr. Sagarino, please.
The board, through their nodding of their heads, indicated that that was definitely something that would be worth, worth pursuing.
I think so too, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Doug Davison, Precinct Two. I would just like to ask that if this passes, which I, I hope it does, that you come back with a vote. It'd be nice to have something that comes to us with a vote showing support or seeing where the select board sits, because it's frustrating when it comes without a vote and with really no feedback from the select board. So I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Campbell, anything new? Really? Honest?
So I'm against the postponement.
Please, who are you?
Chris Campbell, Precinct One.
Thank you.
I'm against the postponement because, one, there seems to be a lot of discussion. Yes, we all want to get this done. But what my frustration continues to be is we're using town election to decide some really important things. We have a great November election that will get 80% of our town population out to vote. And if we really want to talk about things that really matter to our town, we should be using that election to get the majority of our voters to weigh on things that really matter with this town, not just our town election. So I'm against postponement.
I'll ask again. Anything new, anybody? Seeing none? If you have more questions about the process, seems to me the select board meets every couple of weeks. They'll be happy to put you on their agenda, I'm sure. All those in favor of postponing? Actually, we're just voting on the motion to postpone. We got a, on the amendment, correct?
Yes.
All right. All those opposed? All right, so we have amended the article to postpone the, until a future date. All those in favor of postponing? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion carries. We will postpone this until some other day. The motion is as printed in the warrant, and we'll let Liz take it away.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. For the record, I'm Liz Bonventry. I'm the planning director here in town, and I'm here to talk about our proposal for MBTA communities. So I just wanted to, you know, start out, we have a lot of favorable recommendations from a lot of boards. So we have ZBRC, Select Board, Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and we do have a favorable recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce as well. We also have confirmation from the state of Massachusetts that the plan that we are proposing tonight is compliant with what they are looking for. So we do not need to come back to a September town meeting for any changes. We've already got the green light from the state that if we submit what we're, what I'm showing you here, we'll be all set to go. So there are new town meeting members here, so I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. So the MBTA Communities Law was endorsed by the Baker Administration in 2020, and it passed almost unanimously by the state legislature in 2021. It basically says that communities within MBT, within the MBTA catchment area need to have a zoning district of 50 acres where multifamily housing is by right. And so that's less than 2% of the town's land area. And by right means that any developer would need to apply for site plan approval and would still need to go through the entire planning board process to make sure that it complies with all the laws and the bylaws that you have, that you have voted in. And so the minimum is 15 units an acre. And to put that into perspective, that's garden apartments, so that's a lot of the things that are down in the town center. It's something you can think about for scale on that. The other thing that I wanted to say is, you know, from the state's perspective, it may seem like this is, you know, some type of altruistic law, but it's, it's really not. It's an economic development law, and I'm going to go into that a little bit later. So this is a set of zoning performance standards, and it's not unlike 40B, where you have to have 10% as low income, or the Dover Amendment, which exempts agricultural religious, religious and educational uses from zoning. So this type of requirement from the state is not new or different. It's a set of performance standards. So this is what I was getting to, a little bit early. So while on this, on its face, it sounds like an altruistic law, we're going to help everybody get housing, and we really need this, and we're the most expensive state in the country. What it really is, it's an economic development initiative. According to the census, 20, in 2022, 60% of the outward migration from the state were people 25 to 44. This population has a huge effect on the economy and the future economy of the state. It's the prime working age. It's when you're forming households, having families and spending. And so the data continues to indicate that the, the state's, you know, prime workforce is leaving for lower cost areas. And I think, you know, the Baker Administration was looking at long-term projections and, you know, looking at the rate of housing growth, and if it didn't tick up, you know, the state was going to be in economic trouble in, in the future. And the pandemic only exacerbated this. You don't need to be in Massachusetts anymore. You can work remotely from anywhere. You know, our, our, our economy is based on state's highly educated population, and our highly educated population is leaving for lower cost areas. So again, it's not altruism, it's more long-term viability of the economy of the state. I also want to, it's not just the, well, the state economy, it's our economy as well. We are, you know, very cognizant of, you know, the upcoming projects that we are looking at in town. We need to be pushing forward policies for strategic growth for the financial stability of our own town. And so while this isn't just an economic development, you know, initiative for the state, I would like you to think about it as an economic development thing for our town as well. So this is also, so the state's law strategy aligns with our long-term planning efforts. So this is in, this is all from our master plan, and encourage it, you know, these are the recommendations, it encourages zoning changes to respond to housing needs, broader mix of uses in areas, and support the quality of life of the workforce in Burlington so that it is competitive and attracting talent. In our housing needs assessment that was recently completed with the Burlington Housing Partnership, they specifically state, you know, we should be really looking at the MBTA Communities Law and using it. So, you know, I'm in the planning world, so I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of context about housing in this town. So there are 10,000 homes in town. There's both for sale and rental, and 35% of that is multifamily, which is commendable. The average rent per month is $3,000. And again, we're above the 10% 40B threshold. The graphic on the right displays commuter trends, and you know, we know Burlington is an employment hub. And the state recognizes that, and you know, we have a lot of people coming into the town for work, a small amount of people who live and work here, and a large group of residents leaving for work. So one of the goals of this plan and this initiative is to provide more opportunities for people to both live and work in the town. Also, so school age population, this is another common concern when we're discussing housing impact. You know, the belief is that more housing equals more children, and that might have been true 20 years ago. It's really not what the data states. So the current data from the state in, like, the school department proves otherwise. So from our data at the planning department, we have permitted over a thousand, almost 1,000 units of new housing since 2009. And in that time, only 58 new students have enrolled from those new housing units. So the data indicates that for every 100 units of housing built, only six new students will enroll in the Burlington Public Schools. And this was calculated using 2023 data. I'd also like to point out, this is common in most other towns in the state, that enrollment is not ballooning as it used to. So to tackle this challenge that the state put upon us, I, I created an MBTA Communities Working Group and intentionally invited a diverse group of people with differing interests. The only requirement was that members needed to have at least a pretty solid understanding of zoning so that we could all get the ball rolling at this and move quickly. The consensus was to come up with a district that would comply with the state, but that would also have the greatest chance of passing town meeting. So next, we're going to get into the, the meat and bones of it. So the proposal that was developed with the working group was built upon excellent planning work that this body has done prior, prior to this law, and it builds upon the strategic opportunities for new investment. So, you know, you guys have done the hard work previously of permitting a lot of multifamily housing. It's, you guys are commendable. It's, you know, it was, it's, it's really, really hard work, and I, I appreciate what you've done in the past. So this is our proposed overlay district. So an overlay district is zoning that lies on top of an existing zoning district. In this case, property owners can maintain the existing underlying use, like office or retail on their property. It doesn't become pre, nonconforming. Or they can choose to utilize the new overlay district, which would allow for the creation of multifamily housing. Burlington is considered an adjacent community, so we only, because we only have bus routes. So we were able to maintain control by, by putting the overlay anywhere in town. There are a lot of other towns where they have to be near a transit station, and we did not have to, have to do that. We could, we could be creative, which I think we were. So we are, as you can see on the map, we're proposing five overlay areas, four of which cannot be developed any further, and one that has some modest opportunity. Four of the five areas are over existing multifamily housing, which gives, again, gives you guys credit for the work that you've already done by permitting multifamily in town. And I'm going to go through each district. So the first district is Beacon Village. It consists of Beacon Village Apartment, condos at Georgia and Dover Drive, and some of the Westgate Garden Apartments. This is, again, garden apartment district, and we chose this to put in the overlay because it currently complies with the state. We receive credit for past work, and under this zoning, the area could not be built out any further. Again, Heritage at Stoneridge, this is located just off of Wall Street. Similar to Area One, this, this area could not be built out any further. Next is Lifetime Living, our newest multifamily. Similar to Areas One and Two, existing multifamily could not be built up more, and it, it complies and, and the town, we received credit for what you guys did by allowing additional The next area is Huntington and Tremont. They're across from Wegmans. And again, they could not be built out even more. And, you know, according to Norblum, who's the property owner, 50% of the residents who live in these buildings work in Burlington, which is really, which is a really great statistic. They've also brought in significant new investment in vitality in the area in the third half corridor, and I think they've really increased property values in the entire area. So finally, is what we're calling the Staples Commercial District. So this is an area that is across from Third Ave, across from Middlesex Turnpike. It's, it's, it lies between Middlesex Turnpike, it's great, it's the Staples Building, so not the whole plaza, just the Staples Building, and it goes all the way up to where Great Meadow Road meets Middlesex Turnpike. There, we've strategically designed this area to be mixed use to encourage first floor commercial, and it would complement the corridor, much like the Huntington and the Tremont, by adding vitality and new housing options. People ask, you know, how many, how many units could be built at a very, at a maximum? 215 units could be built over eight acres, which is 100 less than what the Huntington and Tremont are over the same amount of land. So they truly are garden apartments. They're not going to be high rises. There's height restrictions on this area as well. So that's just a little bit of context about what we're, what we're potentially looking at. It's also kind of a really ideal area for multifamily. Their properties, they're far from single-family neighborhoods, adjacent to a large employment, employment centers at Northwest Park, walking distance of Wegmans, the mall, the district. There's the MBTA bus route and the LRTA bus route that brings people all over the area. Because of all the nearby amenities, people would have the ability to not be as reliant on cars. The buildings that are there are over 30 years old, and the long-term strategy for this area is to mirror the positive economic benefits that the Huntington and the Tremont have had on Third Ave. So benefits of approval now, I know there's some rumblings about potentially postponing this to September, but as your director, planning director, I see a lot of benefits to doing this now. The plan is, again, has been already approved by the state. Because it gives credit where it's due, because multifamily permitting in the past, we are able to be extremely strategic and use it to our advantage by allowing new investment in areas that have kind of outlived their useful life. So that being said, we have a lot of future plans, and the approval of this amendment will, and from the state, will allow us to be eligible for some of the state's most lucrative grant programs like MassWorks, which funds large-scale investment project, infrastructure projects, excuse me. Since 2010, we've been awarded 15 million in grant funds from the state for this pro, for MassWorks. The state has been really generous with us for MassWorks, a lot more than other communities, because they know we're an employment hub. The state sees it as an economic value by giving us these grants. We received 3 million for traffic lights at Third and Fourth Ave, 4 million for the MWRA connection. It's not finished. You know, a MWRA grant or a MassWorks grant could go farther towards, you know, finishing that connection. 3 mil, we did, you got 3 million for upgrading Middlesex Turnpikes to the Lexington line. So, you know, that, these are all things that we, you know, we, we value as town employees. We, we, we like to be able to use, use this money. And I'd also like to point out, you know, Melissa Tantaklas and myself are working lots of exciting projects that could be in jeopardy if we really can't get the grants that we need. Given major facilities projects down the line, it's more Given major facilities projects down the line, it's more important than ever we're able to access these grants. And without access to these grants, you know, I truly feel that my department and DPW wouldn't be able to provide you guys with the same level of service that you're used to or that you should be getting. And so, you know, as your planning director, I kind of want to be frank. Developing this plan has taken up a lot of time and resources. We think it's a great plan that gives us credit where it's due and allows for small-scale strategic investment. You know, I would really just encourage you to act today so that I can redirect our staff to more exciting things. You know, bike path, mixed-use, mixed-use development by the mall, public art pop-ups, looking, looking at the town center 20 years later. So there's, there's a lot that I, I want to be able to get to. You know, we are Burlington. The plan before you lets us take control of our own destiny, lets us move on to better and more important things. And, you know, while you've listened to me for a while, I'd like to give some other folks a chance to provide their own perspective. Mr. Moderator, if you would, would you please, could you recognize Mr. Rick Parker of the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce?
Mr. Parker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Parker, Precinct 7. Oops, that's my, the old hat I used to wear when I sat right up where Sally's sitting. I know many of you, some of you are new faces. Rick Parker, I've been in Burlington, without saying my age, more than 60 years. I am the president of the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce, and I've had a business here in town. I know that you're up against a lot of hard decisions. And I want you to know that this is a very competitive market on the outside right now, and to not take this lightly. I made some notes so I could stick to the notes. There was a letter of recommendation for support from the chamber that was in your, in your back up or up on the table there, so hopefully you've had a chance to read that. But I just want to let you know that we all know what the commercial sector has meant to the town's budget. As residents, we know that there are other communities that we compete with that don't have the residential tax rate that we have that allows us, for many of us, allows us to stay here. It was only, seems like a couple of months ago, but I think it was last Monday, we heard from Mr. Sagarino talking about the two-thirds of the revenues that this body decides on where to spend comes from the business community. And for the last two weeks, you've debated over how to spend that money. The pandemic, it's changed the office market forever. Burlington has a, has a big office market, and that's changed. Office tenants now require a mere fraction of what they had previously. Office values have dropped, equity in the buildings has dropped, and many lenders now see office as a four-letter word. It's, and oh yeah, the lab market has slowed down. So that's, that's the bad news. The good news is things like green, green energy, advanced manufacturing, medical devices. These are all the next wave along with life sciences. So there's some good, good news on the horizon. So what does this all have to do with housing and the MBTA community zoning? The vast majority of people during the pandemic experienced some extended period of work from home. And they're no longer willing to spend those long hours commuting back and forth to work. Now, I know there's some people in this, in this room today that probably do still commute. I assure you, the next wave of workers will not get in their car and drive an hour and a half each way. You don't have to look far to see that that's, that's just a statement of fact. They want to live near work, and they want to work near amenities. Now Burlington has some of the highest concentration of amenities in the state. And those amenities popped up here to lure the businesses in. And those amenities, in many cases, are small businesses. They're small businesses, they're retail, they're restaurants. Those are here primarily for that corporate credit card, and we as residents benefit from having that all here. But these are what the employers want, and we have that here. But the employers that are looking for a new location, they're very clear. They want more housing. The state considers additional housing to be one of their top priorities. And Liz has talked about that the state considers us to remain globally competitive as the Commonwealth. We need to build more housing, and this is one of the ways they're trying to get us to do it. Burlington depends on more housing to be commercially competitive in the region. And our competition for the next wave of employees and those critical grants, I mean, we've worked together with the town as the business community to secure those grants. If we don't pass MBTA Communities, we're no longer eligible for that. So I just want to let you know that the next wave of employers are not looking at towns like Milton and Marshfield. They do not depend on the commercial sector like we do here in Burlington. And I don't say that from the business standpoint, I say that from us as residents. We need that daytime population to fill those buildings again, and it's not going to be office workers. Also, I want you to know that the companies out there, when they're trying to decide where they're going to locate, they do due diligence. And what do you mean by due diligence? They will be watching this meeting tonight, and I hope my hair's, hair looks okay. They want to get an idea of which towns are serious and receptive to additional housing. They've got to make the decision to locate their business. And if they think that people are dragging their feet and postponing things just to get a better, better understanding, you will not be on that map. So our competition is not coming from Milton and Marshfield. It's coming from Lexington. It's coming from Bedford. These are the, two of the first ones to adopt it. They've shown that they're open for housing, and they're open for business. And that's where Burlington really needs to make sure that they follow that and, and become a leader. You can't stand back and wait for other people and see how things are going to work out. We depend on the commercial market. We cannot stand back. I hope that we'll send that signal that we certainly know the MBTA community zoning is not going to take care of the housing that we need. But if we drag our feet, it's going to send a signal to the people that are looking to locate here, and they will pass us by. And as we look at empty parking lots, we still got the traffic, folks. They're going to cut through. The destination has traffic, and they have the revenue. Everyone else, all these other towns around us, they have the same traffic that we do. We need to remain viable as a commercial sector. So please, send that signal that we're open for business, and we're open for additional housing to help attract those companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Moderator, if you would, would you recognize Jess Sutherland, our Planning Board Vice Chair and also a member of the MBTA Working Group?
Certainly, Ms. Sutherland, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jessica Sutherland, Vice Chair, Planning Board. I'm here not to speak to you on behalf of the Planning Board. I'm here to speak to you as a member of the working group, as well as a resident raising a young family in this town. I hope to be here as long as Rick Parker has been here. And so these initiatives that are about the future, not today, are very important to me. And I've done a lot of research, and so I wanted to provide some color on how we got here. At this point, I think folks understand the legal and financial ramifications of not complying with the law. So instead, I want to talk about why this plan is a good one, in addition to considering the ramifications, because we must remember those. First and most importantly, you need to keep in mind, as I said, that this is a plan for the future, not tomorrow. We've talked much over the last couple of nights about how we wish we didn't get to a point where so much came to a head and instead made decisions sooner. This is one of those decisions that can help us set up for future growth. Setting aside the feelings about this coming from a law, which we can debate for weeks to come, the question at hand we had to answer in this working group was, does this fit into the vision for Burlington and have no negative impact to our infrastructure? Spoiler alert, the answer is yes. Although this plan centers around housing, everything is, is an ecosystem. As Rick touched upon, businesses, services, education, taxes, accessibility, connectivity, and housing are all intertwined and codependent. And the key inputs to each of these are residents and employees. So that's the delicate balance we have to strike for our future planning. When we talk about creating a plan for our residents of the future, that picture has more dual-income, no-kids, or as we like to call them, dinks. 43% of households in the U.S. right now are child-free. That has grown 7% in the last decade and is continuing to grow as cost of living increases. You have to keep in mind that cost of living includes childcare. With Middlesex County being the third most expensive county in the country for infant care, as found by the U.S. Department of Labor, we are only behind San Francisco and surrounding D.C. area. This means that households, on average, are spending $26,409 per year on infant care. I don't bring this up for any other reason than to paint the picture of why the child-free households are growing in this particular area. This inevitably leads to a decreased need for large houses and increase in more smaller housing like being proposed here, and housing that will not decrease the value of single-family homes. Dinks want freedom to roam. They don't want a lawn to mow, but they want access to much. And the families that are having children are having less kids and need the same thing, homes with a couple bedrooms, close to work, and many services. They're going to go where the housing is available, and as Rick said, then the businesses will follow suit. We also asked ourselves if this plan solves for all the housing needs we'd like to see. We agree that under the constraints of the law, it does, but it's not exactly everything we want for Burlington. But we do believe strongly it'll be an important stepping stone into a bigger plan that we will discuss soon and solve for more needs where we have more control and input on things like design, affordable housing, more mixed-use. In the meantime, we strongly believe we should get credit for the great work this town has done already and open the door to additional housing opportunities. I implore you to think solely about the need that exists and the solid, balanced plan that is in front of you to appease the law and move us in the right direction for future generations. The main towns that we compete against for new businesses, talent, and economic growth have already made their move. Lexington, Newton, Bedford, Winchester, and the like. And frankly, they're the more picky towns on what happens. They've already shown future generations and businesses that they are proponents of evolution. So the move is now on our doorstep. Preserve current state, or delay the inevitable and fall behind. We continue to keep Burlington on the leading path of evolution, and if we don't approve this now, we may fall further behind, so many, since so many towns are moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
For my final act, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask for you to recognize Melissa Tintocles, our Economic Development Director.
And what's your last name again? Ms. Tintocles.
Thank you. Well pronounced, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Melissa Tintocles, and I work as the Economic Development Director. And this position is actually kind of a balance almost between our business community and the views that Rick Parker is able to express, and, you know, Jess as our community. And kind of like Amy said at the beginning, you know, I am not from Burlington, but I've taken the time to get to know Burlington. I care about Burlington, and I've been listening to our community. And I think part of what, you know, I want to share with the body tonight is not to think of just this action or this article alone, but to really kind of elevate and look at our zoning proposals tonight before you. The MBTA overlay, the parking update, as well as the use table. These are not just immediate actions, but these are intended to be tactical moves. They're tactical moves. They're actions with a vision in mind, where we want to go. And from what I've understood from our community, these actions are really intended to strengthen our financial stability into the future. And how that happens is by growing our Burlington community. Keeping people out, declining enrollment in our schools is not a recipe for a successful, healthy, growing community. So with that in mind, I think as, you know, we kind of consider as a body these zoning changes, they are not expenditures. These are policies that we can change to enhance our financial stability. And I think that is powerful for this group to really understand. I know it's powerful for Planning Board, Land Use, ZBRC, Select Board, all these groups that have really dug down and really considered why they are supporting not only the MBTA overlay, but the other zoning proposals tonight, and, you know, when, what we've been talking about in the mixed-use, which we've been talking about it before MBTA overlay, you know, was asked of us. Just to add to that and kind of in closing with these statements, I think it's important for us to think of our zoning as adaptable. We are able to change it because communities' needs change, economic trends change. Urban design practices to improve our community for the long run and make it more sustainable change. And those are the things that are built into this. So that not just our overlay with some mixed-use standards, not just parking with the new landscape, which you'll hear about, or the use table with modern uses, but these are things that, you know, you've asked us as professionals to bring to you. You've created my position, you've supported, you know, the planning positions, so we can bring these ideas to you for your consideration. And I hope you understand that we are doing that with the best of intention and trying to really weave together a business-friendly environment that is very mindful of a community that exists here that is also in need of continuing to grow in a smart way. And I think that's what the housing and our other uses, or our other zoning proposals are at least intended to do for you tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tintocles. Planning Board, have a vote on this recommendation? Mr. Gaffney, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, the Planning Board voted 5-1 on the MBTA Communities, and the one dissenting vote was not against the zoning that you saw as presented. It was against the law itself, so a 5-1 vote from Planning. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Planning, Selectmen, take a position on this? Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen unanimously approved this 5-0.
Thank you. Land use? And then ZBRC?
Dave Waddila, Chairman of the Land Use Committee. We voted 7 for, 1 against, 0 abstained. The simple application of these requirements to existing Burlington housing, the majority of the committee viewed the overlays as not to impact the affected land beyond the current conditions. The one exception is the Staples Triangle, where we had a bit more discussion about the expanded use of the land. Ultimately, the majority of the committee members felt this was an acceptable balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddila. Can we hear from the ZBRC now, please?
Sherri Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We approve this 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I think that covers all the boards and committees who have a say in this. Have I missed anybody? So we'll open it up to the body for a discussion. Yes, sir, up at the back.
Hi, Kevin Kluzy, Precinct 2. I just had two points I would like to make. I think it was pretty disappointing that this wasn't broken into two articles. In order to be in compliance, it says we need to meet 50-acre minimum. And we could have just converted the first four proposed zones to be in compliance, and then discussed the remaining Staples area in another article, because that's kind of really what is being proposed as being changed. So that was the first point I'd like to make. And the second one I'd like to make is also the fact that every summer, most Burlington residents realize that we've been having water bans. I live right near the Mill Pond Reservoir. During the summer, you can walk out there pretty far. Really having to get conservative with our water usage in town, so I don't know how adding additional multifamily units is going to help that. Thank you.
Was there a question there?
I can, I can address some of it, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Ms. Bunventra.
So the first part was, so why we added the Staples Plaza as part of the, the whole article. So that was a strategic move that we actually, we talked about that in the working group. And it was a strategic move because we wanted to bring something to town meeting that would appeal to the body, but we also wanted to make sure that whatever we brought would be, would also appeal to the state. also appeal to the state and what they are looking for. And the working group felt that just using existing multifamily was not in the spirit of the law. And so there was the concern that the state would punt it back to us and say, you know, "Come on, guys." And so we thought strategically about where to place that. And so that's why the Staples Plaza, the Staples Plaza, the Staples Triangle came into being, because the body felt like it was the least intrusive, it was close to amenities, not near multi, not near any single-family residents, and, you know, could be an economic benefit to all of the, to the commercial sector in the area by enhancing it, making it into a neighborhood. And then the question about water, and that's definitely something on everybody's mind, but I believe that the connection to the MWRA does solve that water ban issue. That's not to say that the MWRA, the authority there, isn't going to ask people to conserve for sustainability reasons, but I believe that the MWRA connection, which is almost completed, and we have one more step, should be able to alleviate that concern.
You have a follow-up?
I was just wondering, did you approach the state and ask if the existing multifamily zone would work, or did you approach them and they said no to that and just assume? What was the process behind that?
Mr. Moderator, for you. So, great question. So the state, as you can imagine, has been extremely busy with this, with this law. And so earlier, they, I think they've kind of cooled off, but the, just getting somebody to answer an email in a timely fashion was difficult. I was extremely pleased that they got back to me about our pre-adoption, pre-adoption application. So it was not, it was not asked. It was, the working group really felt that, there were some people in the working group who felt like, you know, "You're not complying with the spirit of the law." I've heard from people in town that this doesn't do enough for housing. So it was, it was that, it was that delicate balance, and so I guess that's, that would be.
Thank you, Ms. Bonventra. Mr. Debona? And then we'll get Ms. Byer.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Debona, Precinct 3. So I've had a lot of people reach out to me, some in this room, some not in this room, and speaking for and against. There's a lot of questions with this, you know? And in the past three days, I've spoken individually with Liz, with Jess, with Rick, and the presentation we have doesn't seem like it could be the worst thing for us, you know, where it's been laid out, but there's still a lot of questions to ask. The compromise I came up with after talking to everyone was, "You know what? Why don't we postpone?" That was what Liz brought up earlier because of our conversation. You know? Where's the rush? Three and a half months will be at September Town Meeting. The deadline for this is December 31st. You know? As of right now, about 60 towns have voted this in. About 12 towns have voted this down. There's still 100, roughly 100 towns and cities that still have to vote. If we wait three and a half months, we could see how this shakes out. Maybe some guidelines will change. Maybe the state might loosen some up. Maybe we might get more answers. Maybe we won't get anything, and nothing will change in that period of time. As far as what's on the table right now, I know the Planning Department wants to do some more projects, and they've spent a lot of time on this, and I think they've done a great job. It's here to vote right now. Nothing really needs to change between now and September. If we sit on it, it's here, it's ready. We can bring the same thing back in September and see what happens. Maybe I'm just dragging my feet thinking that? Maybe not. But I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
Mr. Debona, you wanted to postpone it to September?
Yes.
Is that what your motion is?
That's what my motion is, to postpone to September Town Meeting. If people want to do it, we vote, we see what happens.
I'm afraid that motion is out of order. We cannot postpone to a time certain outside the length of time we're here for this Town Meeting.
All right, then it's a motion to postpone. Without a time cert.
Ms. Kim.
Thank you so much. Oh, Christine Kim, Precinct 4. Thank you so much for all the work you did. You did a great presentation. Thank you all that participated in it. My question to you regarding a postponement would be, what are the pros and cons of postponing to September? Do we, like you mentioned, the grants, but it seems like since we're not required to adopt before December 31st, we'd still be in line to get those? But I want to be clear on what we could lose or not lose by postponing to September. Thank you.
Ms. Bonventra.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I just, so the first thing is I wanted to bring up, and it's, thank you for your question, is, you know, the timeline of events and what's going on, and, you know, the press only tells you about, you know, the towns that aren't doing this when most of them kind of are, are approving this. So I think Milton is kind of the one that's in everybody's minds. They are being heard by the State Supreme Court, the Supreme Judicial Court, not until October. And so there wouldn't be any legal changes that you would see from a state, from the state before September Town Meeting. You might see the way other towns are voting, but, you know, I don't think that, I think the state is, I don't see the state as moving on this, and I don't see them changing requirements halfway through. As far, so basically, point being is if you wait until September, you, it, nothing, you know, it might not, nothing might change. So, you know, it's...
Ms. Byer. Now, we're speaking on the postponement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. And I am against postponement. This is ready to go. There are people who have looked at this in granular detail, and what the Planning Department brought forward does not create instant change. Four of those five areas are not going to change at all. What happens in the Staples area, and I didn't really hear it pointed out, is that it just makes it eligible for the multifamily development. That's not going to pop up overnight. It is going to happen over a longer period of time as each parcel of real estate maybe changes hands. It does say, however, that we are ready to go with this. We are moving forward. And the postponement, I didn't hear that there would be any changes between now and September, or even later, coming in at the deadline. And so I just want to commend both the Planning Department and the working group for coming up with a really good, solid plan and having it ready to go for us tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Prendergast, up at the back.
Michelle Prendergast, Precinct 5. Whether we postpone this decision or not until September, is there a deadline that the state has issued for construction to start on any of this new building? Thank you.
Ms. Bonventra.
This law does not require any construction be built. There's no speak, talk of construction. There's no number of units that need to be built, like in 40B. This is just a requirement that cities and towns within the MBTA catchment area have a zoning district that allows multifamily by right. There's nothing stating that anything needs to be built. The state's leaving it up to the free market. And so, you know, this town, we were able to decide, you know, where that zoning is. So there is no, there is no requirement to build anything. It's just a zoning, a zoning overlay district.
Mr. Lieber.
Blaze Lieber, Precinct 6. Just want to say that I've been coming to Town Meeting for about a year now, and I remember hearing several presentations about this, and I feel like I was pretty well-informed. And I don't really feel like there's much more that has to be learned here. And secondly, a lot of people, people who are saying they have concerns or they want to postpone because they want to wait for something to happen, but I haven't heard any reason why this should be not passed yet. I've just heard people saying, "We want to drag our feet because we want to see if we don't have to do it at some point." So that's not going to happen. You know, there will be change, and it can either be a positive change, or we can be stuck and wait and end up with a negative change, because there's, it is going to change. So I'm in favor of voting on this tonight and not postponing. Thank you.
Mr. Boyden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyden, Precinct 1. I agree with a lot I've heard. I think the points that Ms. Byer made about this being well-thought-out, well-designed, and ready-to-go are very valid. Mr. Debona mentioned a point that we should wait and see what other communities do between now and September. I disagree with that. As Mr. Parker pointed out, Burlington is a unique community, stands out in its own way, and we should be deciding this on its own merits for our community. Other communities' decisions, they're not the same communities that we are. So I think we should just vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Hughes, did I see your hand up? Nope. Isn't that like cheating? You know, don't you get in trouble for that in high school? Mr. Kelly.
Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. I think the negative in this is the message it sends to the business community. I would hate for us to lose some very ideal company going somewhere else when it would bring employees and value here. The second thing is, we still have zoning authority. We could, this is an overlay. The underlying zoning will still be there. If we don't like what's happening, we don't have to wait. We can unzone it in September or January, whenever we want. We still have that authority. So what we zone tonight is just an overlay. If we decide we don't like it, or it's a problem, we can unzone it, we're downzoned it.
Mr. Sax.
John Sax, Precinct 7. I went to a very well-run meeting that the Planning Board ran about this. It's publicly available, a lot of information there. I just want to say that I know there's an undercurrent of anger against the state for this, but the state is faced with a problem of housing, and they're proposing what I think is a pretty lightweight solution, which is, why don't you all, all the communities just zone a little bit more? The way the Planning Board has set this up, they've included a whole bunch of places that are already built that will have no effect. The only effect, really, is that triangle behind Staples. And I want to say that as somebody who worked for two years to try to pass the CPA, only to see it get overturned at the last minute, I'm a little concerned that if we put this off, there will be a campaign generated against this, and then we'll be in that position like Milton of being one of those towns. And I don't think that we want to be one of those towns. I don't think the majority does. I think there are certain people here who would love to be Milton, but I don't think the town and this body in general wants to go down that road. And I don't think that we should postpone to allow that campaign to get going like it did with CPA.
Mr. Hartley.
Chris Hartley, Precinct 3. Respectfully, I would say I want to be an informed town. I don't want to be one of those towns. I'd also say that in January, we sent, over a third of this body sent a pretty negative message to the business community, so I don't think that holds a lot of water either. Respectfully, I would say to everybody, I'm in favor of postponing so that I can know more about this, and I'm a no as it is, because I'm not sure what we're going to get financially is commensurate with what it's going to cost us to, to support this housing and the people that move into it.
Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I just want to be clear. So by zone, by changing the zoning to by right, we streamline a lot of oversight processes that we may have ordinarily had under other circumstances if it wasn't by right. Under ordinary circumstances, to rezone an area, and with all respect to Mr. Kelly, because I do respect him immensely, but he had mentioned that we can zone this and then rezone it later. If we were to rezone it later, or unzone it, or, you know, hit rewind, that would require a 2/3s majority. Am I correct?
I believe so, but I would like to ask our attorney here. Mr. Moderator, would you recognize Attorney Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the record. I'm Adam Costa, an attorney with the firm of Mead, Talerman, and Costa, where you're Town Counsel. You probably saw my partner, Lisa Mead, here at the first two sessions, so nice to meet, nice to meet all you Town Meeting members. So to the question, it's unclear with respect to a rezoning, an undoing, let's say, of the MBTA community's adoption, whether it would require a simple majority vote or a 2/3s vote. As the body may be aware, historically, zoning amendments have always required a 2/3s vote under Chapter 40A, Section 5. In the year prior, 2020, the year prior to adoption of the MBTA Community Zoning Act that we're debating tonight, the legislature changed and reduced the voting quorum, or quantum, I should say, from 2/3s to simple majority for certain types of zoning revisions. Those included allowing multifamily housing on a by-right basis. So when the legislature followed that up with what is now the MBTA Community Zoning Act, Section 3A, Section 3A qualified for that simple majority vote for purposes of adoption. Obviously, there have been no communities yet that have adopted Section 3A zoning and then unadopted Section 3A zoning, and that, of course, would put them under compliance, out of compliance with the current law as it stands unless it gets overturned by the Supreme Judicial Court. So my sense is that it would require the same simple majority vote that was required to adopt it, but it's unclear, and there's been no ruling, and there's been no guidance as of yet from the Attorney General's Office or from the state.
So your understanding is a hell of a lot more sophisticated than mine, but at the end of the day, what it comes down to is that we know that to pass this, usually when zoning comes in front of us, it's a 2/3s majority. To pass this tonight, it's half of that, and to undo it, we have no idea what it would be. So I think there's a lot of uncertainty lingering in the air that would make a wait-and-see approach a wise move on our part. I think that we should take a wait-and-see approach because we're going to see other towns turn against this, and we're going to see the state come back and renegotiate this with the towns, with the cities and towns. I think there's a lot of potential for that, and by complying with this and just rolling now, we're really ceding a lot of our right-to-home rule that we've enjoyed, and we're watering down the power of this body right here by just rolling on this. I'm with the motion to postpone.
Mr. Gaffney, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of items that were mentioned here. One, so what will come before you if it's postponed would be the same thing you have here. And the working group actually made that timeline, because if, potentially, if it's voted down here, you don't get an opportunity to redo it prior to what's required for the timeline. That's one thing. Maybe to address the background of this and not enough information, we had a number of public hearings in the Planning Board. We had a number of workshops, and I thank for the folks that attended, both the ones in person and the ones online. So I was a part of those, and there's a lot of great information. Again, the folks that attended, we do appreciate that. I think to, to address Ms. Sinessi's... I, I think to, to address Mrs. Sinessi's, yeah, I think all the things you talk about with the unknowns of rezoning, that will not be done by September either. So I think we, as a working group, came up with a plan that will meet the intent of the state and we believe that's, that's going to have very little impact on the town. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. There's a lot going on here, so I will try to get my thoughts out succinctly. First of all, Marshfield did vote this down. I own property in Marshfield. They're out of their mind. Their taxes are, you think you pay a lot of taxes here? Forget about it. Secondly, postponing this in terms of trying to fight off the state or hope that somebody else does at Forest, I think is chasing a ghost. The timing doesn't work out. You know, there's, there's not enough in us Forest if that's your objective. And really what we've got in front of us, and so in terms of satisfying the law, the way this is being done, it's almost a no harm, no foul approach that I think has been worked out here. It's pretty clever. In some ways, I'm surprised the state is even accepting it. But in any event, that's good for us. And I don't see the benefit of trying to wait out the state or wait out litigation. But what's really going on in my mind is, in order to set the town up to move into the next round of economic development, we, we know an awful lot and we know a lot about what mixed use is about and we know a lot about what businesses are looking for, both small and large. And the right kind of incremental housing that does have a density component, in my mind, in my opinion, and in my mind, is absolutely mandatory. If you don't, if you don't buy into that, you, you probably are going to get screwed economically. And you may not like it and you may want to still see hussle buggies coming down, you know, Camden Street in Burlington, but you know, you've got to move on. So what I'm hoping is that we can get the right kind of regulations and controls around the way the mixed use is built up so that the, the density housing that comes into it serves its purpose, but you know, is pleasing. It isn't ugly. It doesn't create problems. So I, I'm not going to support postponing as much as I know I'm, Mr. DeBona is, is concerned or wants to try to accomplish something. I don't think he's going to get there. But I do want to point out two things. First of all, you, you mentioned, somebody did on one of these slides, all of the revenues that could come out of, out of this and that we've got, you know, huge amounts of, of debt coming up for schools and police stations and whatnot. But the density housing component, as I understand it, the revenues that are generated from that are not industrial revenues, they're housing revenues. So you're not going to get the, the two-for-one tax bump out of that. It's like building a house. So, you know, we shouldn't get too carried away with a windfall of revenue because we've got density housing. The windfall is because it brings the mixed-use businesses into the community that may not otherwise come here. And we are really in a horse race to get that to happen. We probably have five years to be well underway and in 10 years, you'll have lost out if you're not in that, that pattern. We've got some momentum, but maybe not enough. And as somebody else mentioned, you know, we passed up on an auto-deal dealership. Okay. That was revenue. That was real revenue. If you keep either turning businesses away or passing up on these kinds of things that want to come in, you are not going to have the tax base that you have been enjoying for the past 15 or 20 years. You, you just won't have it. So I would not postpone this. I would do everything we can with, through the Planning Board and through the economic development teams to get this to go the right way and to try to keep the housing component that we bring in acceptable. They can be good-looking townhouses. They can be not so dense that they're ugly. You can have open space around them. You've got to do the right thing or you have nothing but row apartments. And that's what, people are scared to death that that's what this is going to turn into. And it shouldn't. There's no need that it does, but you've got to do it right. But not doing it is about the worst thing you could do, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco. Ms. Ben, Liz, do you, can you comment on the, the density issue that Mr. Monaco brought up? He had a question about the density.
Of the, the density of, of what's being proposed in the Staples Plaza? So what, it's truly garden apartment style. It's not like you would see at the Huntington and the Tremont where they're kind of like five stories and taller. It would be like three or four stories. There's a height restriction in the, in the zoning that you have in your packets where any building can't be higher than what the Bancroft is. It's not going to be as tall as the Archer Hotel. So it will be in line with the buildings along that corridor. So it won't feel, you know, it, it will be, you know, tried to make, tried to make it so that it would fit in with the neighborhood and not look like an eyesore and not kind of feel out of place, that it would be in keeping with, with, with that area.
Mr. Waddila.
Dave Waddila, Precinct 1. I am against postponing this. If you really have a problem with the Staples Plaza, just take it out of the, the requirements here. It's not needed. You meet the 50 acres without it. If you really have heartburn over that, then you can make that motion. We can vote on that. It's not necessary to postpone this. We can do this tonight. We should do this tonight. Let's do this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. I too am against postponement. I think when we come to town meeting, we trust our committees that they do our, the due diligence for this. Those meetings are posted. They are open. We all can go. Many of us came here. We've done our homework. We're ready to be able to talk about this. The time to be able against this bill was before January of 2021, when it became an actual bill. This is up to our town to decide, do we want this or do we want to lose money? The real ramification of this to Milton was they immediately lost $140,000 grant that they were eligible. They voted down, immediately lost that grant right away. That's real money for our town. So if we want to figure out how to do it our way, this is how our Planning Board decided that it would work best for our town. There was numerous discussions. Many of us here are ready to vote on this. We are elected to make these decisions. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Asher. That's your name, isn't it?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kate Asher, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member. So I work for Philips, a medical device company. When I hear that 60 towns have already voted it in, it goes to the timing issue that we're competing. And so I think the more we delay, the more we delay the message that we're supportive of companies coming in and that we're providing, like Mr. Parker said, that housing that they are really looking for. And when I look at the staple location and the Broad, for example, up there on the hill there, Network Drive, it's perfect. You know, if I, if I were the Broad, I'd be saying, well, they, they are supporting us, you know? So I think we're in a race, like a few people have said, to show that this is a great place to come. And the final piece I'll say is, you know, when I moved here in 2007, it was all software. Well, after COVID, you can live anywhere with software. They're not coming here anymore, you know? In my company, you know, they're moving the bean counters and all to Tennessee and Kentucky and wherever, you know, it's cheap. The types of workers that they need to move close to are biotech, research, the type of thing the Broad does because the researchers actually have to go to the office. They actually have to go in. So if you want a base, a, a commercial base, it's, it's going to be biotech, it's going to be the life sciences. It's where, you know, researchers have to go into the office and not software.
Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I'm very much against postponing. It has been very clear, as was stated, we are not going to know in September anything that's going to help us make a decision that's any different than what we'd make tonight. For people who, there were a lot of public sessions, there were even information sessions for town meeting members where Liz went through this in great detail. It was not, if you didn't attend in person, you could have been there virtually. And if you weren't there virtually, you could watch the video. So this is something that everybody should, there's nobody in this room that shouldn't be prepared to make this decision tonight. I think one of the things, I think, was said by one of the people earlier, was that we need to grow smartly, which means we in town meeting need to be smart about it. So the Chamber of Commerce and the committee have been very clear that we, this is a time for us to be brave in our decisions. We need to be forward-thinking. We need to be prudent, but let's not be foolish. So we need to support this for the town, for our finances and for our future. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson, online, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to say that I'm concerned that the primary motive for waiting would be to see if a few more communities turned down the law and therefore we could jump into a situation where the state would have to, we would join with that small group of dissenting groups and we would then be able to join into the lawsuit against the Attorney General of Massachusetts. You'll remember the Attorney General of Massachusetts is suing Milton and probably any other towns that go against this. And we would then spend a bunch of tax mayor money here in Burlington in a lawsuit that is very, very likely to be lost. So I can't see that as being a very good reason to postpone. So I think that we should move ahead on this. There's lots of information out about it and it's a very reasonable map that is really a reward for all of the work that we have done. Those of you who've been around for seven or eight years know that we have done a lot of planning and working to bring in apartment complexes in places where we wanted them to be with requirements about how they are done that hasn't changed the town very much. And we've done a lot of work making that happen so that we can then reap the benefits of having apartment complexes around the town. Now, the reason that Milton, the reason that Milton said no is because they don't have any apartment complex. They are stingy and they haven't let anybody into their town who couldn't buy a single-family house. And we haven't been that way. We have 30% of our places as apartments for people to live. And so we're getting the benefits of that now and there's no reason for us to throw ourselves in with Milton that has built a several little wall around it. It's going to cost us a bunch of legal money if we start going down that road.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Yes, please. I'm sorry, I'm, my, your name, how could I not know your name? There has been a motion to move the question. Not debatable. Are those in favor of moving the question? We are voting on the amendment. We are voting to, yes, we're voting on the amendment to postpone. We're vote, we're vote, we're voting on ending the discussion on the amendment. Okay? This is just to end the discussion. And then we will move to vote on the amendment. The amendment, the, the motion to, to postpone. That was the amendment to the main motion. Okay? So who, who is in favor of ending debate? Thank you. Who's opposed? It's clear two-thirds. Okay. Now let's vote on the proposed amendment. All those in favor? The motion to, the proposed amendment, which is a motion to postpone. It's an amendment to the motion. Right now, we are back to voting on whether or not we wish to postpone. Okay? Everyone got that? If you vote yes, you want to postpone. If you vote no, you don't. Okay? All those in favor of postponing? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion is defeated. It brings us back to the main motion. Now, we've discussed this an awful lot. Is there further discussion, further comments people wish to make back on the main motion? Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glance, Precinct 1. Those, if you recall, we had a long conversation about this a couple of months ago and I didn't see anything in the backup related to the point that I tried to, to raise. If everyone remembers when we first put the town center overlay in place, we wanted all of this mixed use in the town center and housing and walkable and bringing all the buildings up close to the street like it is in Lexington Center and wouldn't that be nice? And as soon as we passed it, immediately, all of the possible, the maximum possible housing that was permitted, all ran and got permits. And so much so that we immediately had to put a moratorium to stop any further housing from going in there. And none of the other benefits that were supposed to come along happened. The developers essentially got a lot of economic windfall out of that because they got to put in a lot of housing that they previously were not able to put in and didn't give back any of the other benefits that the town center was supposed to get. And I know there's not a huge area of impact from this. It's just the Staples area. The others are all existing. But what I, what we're doing here is by taking those, what's essentially a random set of properties in terms of whoever happened to own them, we're just picking, you know, that as being a good spot to allow the, the multifamily. Whoever happens to own those is going to get a big boon because the first thing they're going to do, you can forget the idea of unzoning it in three months because as soon as this goes in, they're going to put in permits to go put in housing because it's the, it's what's the, what's the phrase? The, the maximum best use or the?
Highest and best use.
Thank you, yes. It's the highest and best use for those properties to put in as much housing as possible because they'll make the most money on it. That's what they're going to do because they're economic actors and it's capitalism. So there's nothing wrong with that. But we should realize by doing this, we're going to give whoever those owners are an economic windfall. And so my question is, is there any, and I know it has to be quote "by right" in order to pass this MBTA law, but there should be some way that those random owners don't get some random economic benefit out of this, but that the town gets the benefit out of it. If they're going to get a windfall, there should be some way to have infrastructure improvements, have to make something that we should get benefit instead of just them getting benefit. Can you address that?
I can, through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I can. And yes, I do remember our conversation and I want to thank you for taking time out to talk to me about that for a long time. So as far as an economic windfall, so I actually have spoken with developers in the area, developers that we see a lot at the Planning Board meetings. And what they are saying is that what could be built here with the restrictions that you see in the bylaw, you're not going to be able to see huge amounts of housing here and that most of it won't happen within the next five years because of the way that the market is and the interest rates are. And there's just not a lot of money going around that can be lent out to build these buildings. You have really high labor costs, really high, you know, costs for materials. And so, you know, I, I've been, you know, Todd Fremont Smith, you know, from Norblum, he's like, yeah, we could, and you know, it's good, it would be years before we did it, we were able to do anything here. The other thing that you mentioned is, you know, how do we get benefit from the town for this redevelopment? So whenever a new development comes in to the town, that's the time that the Planning Board has to really make it the best project for the town and mold it in that way. So that would mean, you know, you're going to get better stormwater controls than are there now. This area is ripe, needs sidewalks, bike lanes. You have a beautiful meadow. sidewalks, bike lanes. You have a beautiful meadow, the wellfields there, natural, natural area, you know, make that a feature of, of these units, you know. So, we will be, the upgrades there will be consummate with the building. I mean, if traffic lights need to be added, you know, we'll do traffic studies. So, you know, we will make sure that, you know, whatever gets built, you know, is, is consummate with, you know, what the town needs and how to balance everything. And I hope that answered your question. Oh, yeah, Mr. Moderator, the other thing I would say is, you know, while it's not an immediate, you know, we're handing, you know, developers a lot, you know, this money, this windfall, you know, I will say that this area was very strategically thought through as to, you know, there's a good reason as to why, as a planner, I felt like this was a really good spot for the multifamily housing. I've actually always thought that this area was ripe for some type of redevelopment, and, and you know, multifamily would be one of those things for, for years, honestly. But that you're not going to see it immediately, but I think that the, the economic benefits of, of having people in that area, vibrancy, people going to Tony C's late, walking to King's, going to the mall, you're going to see a neighborhood develop so that it's not just like the whole place empties out at 6:00. You're going to see that, you know, those tax benefits of your meals tax and all that type of thing coming with people living in the area. So, I hope that addresses.
Ms. Manny, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rose Manny, Precinct 6. I have two questions. This says that multifamily shall be required, no, Burlington shall be required to create a new multifamily district of 50 acres at minimum. So, is the Staples area 50 acres?
Can I, um, Amy?
Says new.
Can I, can I go back to my map, Amy? Thanks. Sorry. We're gonna, I'm gonna make you a little bit dizzy. Hold on. So, so this is, this is how it all adds up. So, there are five different areas. So, the Staples area, the one, the reason why we're really kind of harping on it is because it's the only area that has redevelopment potential within the next maybe five or 10 years. The rest of the overlay district is on existing multifamily. We don't see Beacon Village changing. We don't see Heritage at Stone Ridge changing that much. So, that's why we put it, we put the zoning districts there. So, altogether, these zoning districts do add up to over 50 acres.
So, it doesn't have to be new, then?
No, there is no requirement that it's, it's new land. The state is looking at this overlay district and looking and saying, you know, could housing be built here if it was empty? Like, you know, you, again, like the state says, you couldn't put the overlay district in a swamp where nothing could be developed. So...
Okay. So, it doesn't have to be new, it could be existing?
Yes.
All right. And is all of this building going on residential, are they all apartments? Are any of them condominiums to be purchased?
So, there isn't, again, there is no building happening. This is all future speculation about what could happen. We are, this, what's before you is just changing the zoning or adding an overlay on top of the existing zoning. So, legally, the town, we do not have the legal authority to define whether they are apartments or condos.
Okay.
That is not, we are not legally allowed to do that.
So, they could be townhomes, then?
They could be. They could, they could be.
Thank you.
Ms. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Z1, Precinct 5. I'm going to ask you guys to vote yes on this article because I just want to remind you guys that there are four categories in the state law. There's a rapid transit community. They need a 25% total housing unit. And then community, they need a 15%. Where adjacent community need 10%. And then there's adjacent small town need 5%. So, for us to comply is pretty easy. We're already done pretty much like 80%. We only need to push a little bit, and this little effort is easy goal. And then we get all the state grant. And if not complying, then we lose all those grants. And who's going to pay for a lot of project? It will be our taxpayers. So, we're actually punishing our taxpayers. So, I think it's, it will be great if we will, yes, pass the article. Thank you.
Mr. Everett. And I'll get Mr. Harrington.
Corey Everett, Precinct 6. There was some talk earlier about young professionals leaving this town and more generally leaving Massachusetts. I'm here to tell you, as a young professional, that these claims are absolutely true. My friends, they go to college, they did everything right, you know? They took the student loans. They got the job. They're making the money. And even though they're at the top pay band for their job, the top pay for their age, they look at apartments here. They make $5,000 a month. Not everyone does. Very few people do. They have to pay $2,000 or $3,000 of that just to live. That's above the 33% that has been defined as, you know, what's acceptable for people. So, to build more housing is paramount. But I get it, right? I want to speak to the people who have concerns about more people being here. That's fundamentally what it's about. That's fundamentally what it's about. And I get it, you know? You did well. You have a nice place to live. You want to preserve the character of your neighborhood. This zoning is pretty simple, you know? I don't think there will be many developments in the next 10 years because of this zoning. And the benefits are that, first off, HELE doesn't bring the hammer down on us. And secondly, that we're all cooperating, town to town, to build more housing, to fix the problem, the fundamental problem of supply and demand that is causing the housing crisis in the first place. If it weren't obvious, I massively support this zoning, and I urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Harrington, please.
Jeremy Harrington, Precinct 2. I just want to express myself from my work life, not necessarily living here, but as somebody who works in Framingham and tries to hire young people in data science and various analytical roles, it's very hard to bring them in because in Framingham, while there's housing, there aren't the amenities they want. They stay in Boston. I lose out on hiring people. And when they find out I live in Burlington, they love all the amenities we have, but they can't live here. Furthermore, I make recommendations on where we should be putting new facilities. And some of the stuff we look at is, can our people afford to live there? Do they want to be there? We've walked away from beautiful locations because we know that our people won't live near there. They'll commute. We'll lose them. This is our opportunity to step forward and to pass this law and not walk away from this. As somebody who helps make these decisions for a business, it's really important that we go forward with this and don't shoot ourselves in the foot. Thank you.
Yes, sir, up at the back. Then I'll get Ms. Willard, and then Mr. Bell.
Hi. Kevin Clusey, Precinct 2. I'd like to propose an amendment to remove the Staples area from this proposal.
All right. There's been a proposal, amendment to remove the Staples area. Ms. Pundentrue, do you like to comment on that?
Yes, I would, Mr. Moderator. So, while it may look like if this is just approving a map, there's a lot of behind the scenes that comes with this, with this law that the state has required. So, not only do we have to provide zoning that complies, we also have to come, we also have to provide them with a compliance model, which is an Excel workbook that, you know, is a computation to make sure that we check all the marks on, on the, for the MBTA communities. And if we were to move, remove Area 5 from that for an amendment, I cannot be certain that we would be compliant with the state anymore. So, I just, I just want to put that one out there. I can't, it's, it's the zoning, but then there's also a compliance model to show the state that you do have the 50 acres, that the, that the land isn't in a swamp, all that type of thing. So, it would, I can't guarantee that that would, that that would comply, and we might have to come back in September to amend it, to comply. I know, it's not as simple as doing the math up here. I know, I, I promise, it's, it's not. There's, there's more that goes into it. There's a whole compliance model part of it that includes GIS modeling. So, while it might seem simple on the surface, it is not, it is not. So...
Ms. Saltman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. Would, Mr. Moderator, would you please recognize Sharon, who has raised her hand 5,000 times and is yet to be called upon? Thank you.
Well, there's a few people that have been raising their hand 5,000 times, Myrna.
Well, okay. I don't have eyes on back of my head yet, but eventually.
I'm trying not to, not to avoid anyone. Who did I say I was going to go to next? Ms. Willard, and then Mr. Bell, and then? Ms. Dory. Ms. Lori, excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. I, I think that the reason to vote this down is that the, the choice of that triangle of properties is made to provide something that's not just already there. And I think that it's an ideal prop, an ideal area for some multifamily housing on top of, on, on top of perhaps retail, simply because it's close to amenities. People can walk there. It will be nice if someone does develop some of those because, oh, we need some sidewalks on that side of the road. There are people who walk in the road because they don't want to cross to the other side because that's not their destination. And I think that it's well worth keeping Section 5 in the, in the article. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, please.
Mr. Moderator, Roger Bell, Precinct 6. Can we please move the question?
Okay. We're, we're moving the question to see if we wish to vote on the amendment to remove the Staples area. Mr. Campbell.
Isn't an amendment supposed to be received in writing?
Yes, it does. But let's, let's dispose of it this way, please. Yes, it would have to be in writing. You'd have to be citing the sections of the law that, that you wish to take out. So, it is not as simple as just saying, we want to take that out. So, but anyway, let's, let's just get this done. All those in favor of moving the question? No. All those in favor of moving the question, please? It's been moved. I can't do anything else. I can't recognize you.
You're in there.
No, I said I'd get to her. But the question has been moved. Now, it is not a debatable motion. You have to vote on it immediately. So, we will vote on moving the question. All those in favor of moving the question? All those essentially bringing the amendment to a vote? We have an amendment on the floor. We've been discussing the amendment. Mr. Bell says we should stop discussing it and vote on it. So, we have to vote on whether we should stop discussing. And that's what we're doing. Okay? Is that clear?
Yes, Ms. Byer.
That's what the amendment is. That's what we have been discussing, removing the Staples area from the plan. So, now the question is, do we wish to move to a vote on the amendment? All those wishing to vote on the amendment? All those wishing to discuss the amendment further? What, it's pretty...
You asked who was in favor of moving the question. You never asked who was against it. I'm not...
I have, that's what we just did, Adam.
That's what we're doing now.
Now, I guess I'm speaking, maybe it's my German heritage. I'm switching languages here. All right. What is before us now is whether or not we wish to move the question. Okay? Is that clear? If we move, if we vote yes, we stop debating the amendment, and we go to vote on the amendment.
You already did one. Who's in favor of moving the question? So, are we moving on to who's not in favor?
There is a point of order in the middle of it. We're voting it again. People, there was a question as to what we were doing. So, I've explained it a couple of times, and hopefully, we're all set. Who is in favor of moving the question? Thank you. Who is opposed to moving the question? It's clear two-thirds. So, the question has been moved. We will go to vote on the amendment as to whether we wish to remove Area 5 from the plan. The amendment's dead.
No, it's not. It doesn't...
Oh, don't worry. I'm sorry. We're, we're voting on the amendment. Excuse me.
I don't have what the amendment is. I would need to have in writing. If someone wants to take a few minutes to write what the amendment is, I'll be very glad to type it in. But I, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is.
So, Mr. Flynn, if you wish us to consider this, you need to bring it to us in writing. All right. After all that, I'm going to rule the amendment out of order because I don't have it in writing.
Can we stretch now?
Okay. So, now that brings us back to discussing the main motion. Ms. Lori.
Sharon Laurie, Precinct 3. I almost want to be speechless, but I won't. I did have the opportunity to attend one of these planning meetings, and I was concerned about the Staples location. And then I had some very deep conversations about why this location. So, this is a good plan, but more importantly, if we pass this, we get to move forward and look at other opportunities for the town of Burlington. We're in the position to try to get other grants for the town of Burlington. We want monies to play for the police station, the high school, the middle schools, and all the wonderful things we just voted on. So, we can spend a bunch of time and thinking something's going to change in September, but we'll lose on the opportunity today to get additional grants for the town of Burlington. And that's what we need to focus on. This is a law at the moment. People are fighting the law. Like someone said, why should we lose, use our tax dollars to fight something? Let other people fight it. And if we have an opportunity, we don't have to do this, then we don't do it. But vote today. Let us move forward. Let us be progressive because that's what we need to do. We just spent millions of dollars. We just spent millions of dollars. We spent the money. So now we gotta find a way to refurbish the money, recoup the money. So I ask that you guys decide to move forward and vote this in. Thank you, Moderator.
Thank you. Further discussion on this article. Mr. Campbell, have you spoken on this article yet? Okay. Then bring him out. Do we need a microphone up here?
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1, move the question.
Boy, we're really trying to confuse the issues here. Okay, the question has been, there's a motion to move the question. This will end debate. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The motion carries. That brings us to a vote on the main motion, as printed. No amendments, no changes. All those in favor? It's a majority vote, correct. All those in favor of the article, please? Article 31. Isn't that the one we've been discussing? All those, okay, thank you. All those opposed? It's a clear majority, and the motion passes.
Stand up.
I see two people standing for a roll call. That doesn't make seven. I already ruled, there's only two people standing. Now there's four. Now there's four, it's still not seven. There's five, it's still not seven. Ms. Angelo, are you standing for a roll call vote? Or are you just standing?
Looks like we got seven.
We will have a roll call vote. Just remember, if we don't get through tonight, we're gonna come back on June 10th. Mr. Moore. Could we get this one on? Microphone on, please. The red one.
Precinct 4, okay. Steve Moore in Precinct 3. Why June 10th instead of June 3rd? Further reconvene date if we don't finish our business by?
We haven't set up a, the auditorium is not available unless you want to come back on Memorial Day.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that. That's what I was asking.
It's not available the next week, and so the first available night is June 10th. You're welcome.
Okay. Let's go through a roll call.
Hold on just a minute.
Yes, Ms. Saltman.
As we have the roll call, we have a little stretch.
Yes, Ms. Saltman, we can have a little stretch. And I believe there are 86 people here, Myrna.
Just a minute, please. I don't have the full motion because it's about five pages. It's Article 31. I'm trying to get the roll call vote thing up so we can do a roll call. Okay? Thank you.
Who's speaking?
Monty Pearson. Point of personal privilege.
Yes, Mr. Pearson.
Why is it that seven people can force a roll call vote?
Because that's what our bylaws say.
It says in the bylaws?
I didn't make it up.
Okay. Well, we'll be changing that.
You go right ahead, Monty. While you're checking, let's start the roll call. Peter Abreskow. Please, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. William Boyven. Christopher Campbell.
Yes.
Nolan Glance.
Yes.
Michael Hardy.
Yes.
Florence Leone.
Yes.
Gregory Ryan.
Yes.
Adam Sinessi. David Waddila. Catherine Byer.
Yes.
Kathleen Calucci.
No.
Kevin Calucci.
No.
Doug Davison.
Yes.
TJ Flynn. Angela Hanafin.
No.
Jeremy Harrington.
Yes.
Patricia O'Brien.
Yes.
Michelle Papano. George Papianus. Cindy Phillips. Yes. Myrna Saltman.
Yes.
Christine Scola.
No.
Kimberly Traynor. Jeffrey DeBona. Sherri Ellis. Joanne Fristachi. Sharon Lor.
Yes.
Stephen Marchesi. Melinda Meyer.
Yes.
Gary Mercier. Oops, never mind, not here. Steve Moore.
Yes.
Mildred Nash.
Yes.
Monty Pearson. Brian Poopa. Who did? He's not checked in.
We will get back to them when they check in.
Daniel Raski.
Yes.
Was it yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Roger Riggs. Kate Asher.
Yes.
Nancy Bonasera.
Yes.
Karen Cooper. Christine Kim.
Yes.
William Lusano.
Yes.
Tamara Meniskalko. Oops, never mind. David Miller.
Yes.
Frank Monaco.
Yes.
Becky Norum.
Yes.
Michael Prue. Sally Willard.
Yes.
Jifan Wong. Pat Angelo. Christine Concession.
Yes.
Mark Donahue.
Yes.
Carl Foss.
Yes.
Bonnie Nichols.
Yes.
Michelle Perdigast.
Yes.
Alex Rutfield.
Yes.
David Tate.
Yes.
Frank Arsenault.
No.
Zee Wang.
Yes.
Richard Wing. He's gone. Sarah Walinski.
Yes.
Ernie Zabelotny. Mr. Zabelotny, yes or no, on Article 31? Roger Bell.
Yes.
Jason Brooks. Ryan Clement. Corey Everett.
Yes.
James Fraxick.
Yes.
John Eiler.
Yes.
Darrell Interess.
Yes.
Gary Caskey.
No.
Blaze Lieber.
Yes.
Edward Parsons.
Yes.
William Trelagann. Adrian Callahan. Julie Cullen.
Yes.
Betsy Hughes.
Yes.
Jack Kelly.
Yes.
Neil Espacio. Scott Martin, oh, never mind. Ryan McSheffrey.
I'm standing.
Kerry Riley. Ronald Riley. Jonathan Sacks.
Yes.
Paul Schwartzman.
Yes.
David Van Kemp.
Yes.
David Webb.
Yes.
Mark Woods.
Yes.
Okay, we have about four people that came in late.
All right, let's go back to people who came in late. Mr. Noonan.
Hold on, don't...
All right. Check them.
Can you stand if you came in late and you didn't sign in?
I got one right here.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. What's your...
All right, Paul, how do you vote? Who else do we miss?
Not good.
Mr. Duttucci.
You were a no. No. You were a no, Paul?
That's correct.
Okay, Paul's a no. Next one.
Mark DeBrans, Precinct 4.
What's your vote?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Yeah, you got three. You got three then. I'm asking you if you have a... Oh, sorry.
All right. Chris Hartling?
Chris Hartling.
Chris Hartling's a no. What precinct are you in, Chris? Mr. Duttucci.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
You're voting yes. What precinct, Dan?
6.
Now, do we have everybody? Anybody we've missed?
What? Oh, okay.
Okay. What do we got? Yep. This is 65, 19, 4.
Here's the 64.
65, so that one is...
That's good.
Yeah, so...
64, 4.
Yes.
17, 27, 37, 47, 56, 64.
10 for Precinct 4. 9 for Precinct 5. 10 for Precinct 6. 8 for Precinct 7.
So maybe I just got one out. You got a computer?
Well, let's make sure that my... Should be... What do you have? Did you get...
64, 4.
What? Okay, okay. So, yeah, 64, 4.
13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19.
Yeah, okay. 64, 19.
64, 19, and 4 upsets.
There being, still 64 people in favor and 19 opposed, the motion still passes. You want to come back in June?
It's only 9.
There was a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second? Is there a second?
No.
No second. The motion dies. Thank you. Okay. We've done 32 and 33. It brings us on to 34. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and the article is as printed in the warrant about parking and landscaping modernization. We will go back to Ms. Bonventra. Liz? You all set to present on this one?
To present, Mr. Moderator. So, again, for the record, Liz Bonventra, Planning Director. So I kind of gave you guys a little piece of this back at January Town Meeting, and now we're bringing you the real deal. And so this is an amendment to modernize our parking requirements and our landscaping and requirements. So, again, support from committees and boards, you know, favorable recommendations. We've done a lot of work on this. This is all of the meetings I've been to from various Town Meeting boards, committees, for both this article and the next article you will see since last November. We've also been doing a lot of back and forth with the chamber, and they've been a really invaluable resource to us, and they've been really helpful, and they've been giving us suggestions, and so it's been a really excellent process thus far. So, you know, why are we doing this? We are looking to modernize and streamline, so we're trying to ensure that our parking requirements meet the needs of today's post-COVID business environment. Ease of use, ensuring that Town Hall staff, residents, and commercial enterprises can access the text efficiently. We're looking at climate resiliency, ensuring that our parking and circulation policies introduce carbon emissions and the heat island effect. And we're looking at formalized standards, so ensuring that new parking lots and parking structures meet a baseline design standard, elevate design with standards so private investment, the sum of private investment...
It brings us on to thirty-four. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. And the article is as printed in the warrant about parking and landscaping modernization. We will go back to Ms. Bonventra. Liz? You all set to present on this one?
To present, Mr. Moderator. So, again, for the record, Liz Bonventra, Planning Director. So I kind of gave you guys a little piece of this back in, at January Town Meeting, and now we're bringing you the real deal. And so this is an amendment to modernize our parking requirements and our landscaping and requirements. So, again, support from committees and boards, you know, favorable recommendations. We've done a lot of work on this. This is all of the, all of the meetings I've been to from various town meeting boards, committees, for both this article and the next article you will see since last November. We've also been doing a lot of back and forth with the chamber, and they've been a really invaluable resource to us, and they've been really helpful, and they've been giving us suggestions, and so it's been, it's been a really excellent process thus far. So, you know, why, why are we doing this? We are looking to modernize and streamline, so we're trying to ensure that our parking requirements meet the needs of today's post-COVID business environment. Ease of use, ensuring that town hall staff, residents, and commercial enterprises can access the text efficiently. We're looking at climate resiliency, ensuring that our parking and circulation policies introduce carbon emissions and the heat island effect. And we're looking at formalized standards, so ensuring that new parking lots and parking structures meet a baseline design standard, elevate design with standards, so private investment, the sum of private investment enhances the value for the overall community. And then, you know, in the developer discussion, these requests aren't out of market, so they're, they're in line with what other communities are doing. And so this is kind of example, we're going to do some before and after. This is the before, this is our current zoning bylaw regarding parking requirements for dormitories and educational uses and library uses. So if you are a small business owner coming in to the town looking to figure out how many parking spaces you would need or where you should be locating, this is what you need to kind of figure out. Not super user-friendly, so, you know, we're trying to fix that by doing this, making a simple table so that, you know, it's clear for staff, it's clear for developers and small business owners regarding kind of what, what you need to do. Another before and after, so we're also adding parking requirement flexibility. So parking is a fine balance, as we know, and the planning board knows. So we took both the community's, community feedback as well as business community's feedback about this. And the aim of this amendment before you is to kind of allow greater flexibility for, for businesses while reducing the need for pavement to meet that parking requirement. So we have, we have two methods of doing that. So the first method is a parking ratio waiver. So if you're a business and, you know, you are one or two spots over what the requirement is or one or two spots below, so a ten percent above or below, you can just ask for a waiver from the planning board during the regular permitting process. If you want to go above and, or above or below that ten percent, it would require a special permit with the planning board, and you would need to, and you would need to kind of meet one of these requirements to show that, you know, basically prove to the planning board that what the parking that's available or what you're looking to do would work. So the next thing we're doing is we're adding parking lot development standards, and so basically this applies to all new developments and properties that are improving the area by more than fifty percent. So it's, you're not going to be required to do this if you're adding a small addition, but if you're doubling the size or you're completely rebuilding something, you'll need to add these, these into your, your plan. So we're balancing the community, the business community's desire for more flexibility with the community's desire for better design, connectivity, and sustainability. Again, what we're doing is not out of market. This is in line with what other communities have, and our standards will align with other communities. Let's see, landscaping standards. So this is similar, similar to the last, the last design, the last slide I had. One of the big discussion items we have on the planning board with proponents or applicants is landscaping. And so parking lot landscaping and reducing that green, that heat island effect is, is really important. And so, you know, when you have a large parking field, a new, a new large parking field, you're going to be required to have islands and shade trees to reduce that, that heat island effect. And then, you know, looking towards a more greener Burlington, you know, paved areas get much warmer than the surrounding rural landscape during the summers, and developed areas experience, you know, temperatures that are fifteen to twenty degrees warmer than surrounding vegetated areas. You know, going from town center to Burlington Mall, you know, you feel it in the summertime. So this proposal, we're, you know, we're building on the recommendations of previous plans, so we have our municipal vulnerability preparedness assessment, which was done with the Conservation Department, and they specifically studied the heat island effect on the Vinebrook Waterway. And so, you know, it's important to restore that existing, restore existing green space and reducing, reducing hardscaped areas by adding back trees and green space. And so, you know, this is also going to require that, you know, you have native trees and that there's also different options for stormwater management that allows for different infiltration methods that are greener as well. And now, Mr. Moderator, I would like you, would ask that you recognize Jess Sutherland to discuss this, to add her.
Ms. Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jessica Sutherland, Vice Chair of Planning Board. Just quick comments, we had a, well, a couple of us had meeting with some businesses, developers, Chamber of Commerce, Melissa was there, some other boards and committees were there to just kind of have a conversation around what is happening with office space, what are developers seeing, what are businesses feeling, how can we attract the small businesses as well as the large businesses, make processes a little less painful? And a lot of the feedback that we received is that they spend a lot of time, and even the lawyers said they feel it's unnecessary that they're involved so much in the process, but unfortunately, a lot of our documentation and processes are a little unclear. And so even though this might seem like, okay, why are we discussing this? It seems like kind of a small thing. This is actually a really big thing for businesses looking to enter. It's, we do not, we have a high barrier to entry simply by the amount of information they have to comb through, and then they still have questions that have to be answered by planning staff, by the building department. And so this, along with the next one we'll see, is really in that vein of trying to reduce the barrier to entry, because when they see, ooh, it's a lot clearer, a lot easier to understand in Bedford, I'm going to hop over there. That's something we really want to try to, as a planning department and board prevent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
And, Mr. Moderator, if I may, I would ask that you recognize Melissa Tintoclas, our Economic Development Director.
Ms. Tintoclas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to reiterate that this has been a balance between the business community and our Burlington community and residents in that we are trying to find a balance between adding more flexibility that the planning board, you know, sees and hears from the business community as well as improving the overall value of each individual property as it gets redeveloped, because we see that with parking lot investments, especially in kind of design, we increase the overall value of our commercial district as a whole versus one-off projects trying to fight with developers. This kind of sets a tone for the elevated design that we want to see in Burlington. So I think that's all for now, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffney, is there a vote of the planning board?
Yes, Bill Gaffney, Planning Board. On this item, it was unanimous, seven, zero, in favor of.
Thank you. Land Use Committee, Mr. Waddila.
Hi, Dave Waddila, Land Use Committee Chair. In general, the Land Use Committee felt this was a good upgrade to the parking specifications. It improves upon the current requirements and codifies some additional requirements in a way that makes parking more of a forethought and not an afterthought. Turning the parking requirements by use case into a table was a great improvement to this section. The one downside was the Land Use Committee did get stuck on seven, five, two, four, D, which describes off-site parking defined by the use of formal lease or covenant recorded with the town. These are words only with no provisions or desire for enforcement over time, therefore somewhat meaningless. Okay, we're six, four, one against, one abstained.
Thank you. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, Ms. Ellis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. ZBRC voted six, one, in favor.
Thank you. Anybody else take a position, Select Board? Mr. Espial.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Both of these articles, thirty-four and thirty-five, are very important. They're foundational building blocks for what you're going to see in September with what all the hard work Melissa's been doing with the Mall Road redevelopment. They're very crucial to the economic viability of the town, and everyone's worried about that, so Select Board is, was in full support, five, zero on this one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Espial. I guess now we open up for discussion to the body. Questions on this? Mr. Rutfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Rutfield, precinct five. So it looks like most of this is about allowing more kinds of parking and allowing more exceptions to the general minimum parking rules, which is great because it does help from an environmental perspective. But I did notice, and correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, it looked like the laboratory research went from one parking space per thousand square feet to one point two five. So can you talk about why that changed?
I, through you, Mr. Moderator, I, I can. So we actually had a really great back and forth with the business community and kind of what they see in trends and what they're looking at for leasing. And so I think that that was, that was one of the things that they said, that in order to, you know, get people to come and lease, one of the concerns is, you know, is there enough parking? And so, you know, one point two five, we felt like they, they wanted more. We said, you know, okay, maybe we can compromise at one point two five. And so that's essentially, that's, that's where we landed.
Further discussion from the body? Mr. Davison.
Doug Davison, precinct two. I, I appreciate it very much that the chamber was really on board with the last one, and, and it shows that we're working with the business community. I, I may be overly sensitive to that, but it's a means, it's what we worry about. So did they take a position on this? Are they comfortable with it? Are there things that they'd like to see different? I've heard rumblings both ways, so I'd like to, no.
Sure, so the, the, the chamber did not take a position on this. I did not ask them to take a position on this. I kind of considered them kind of experts in the field, and so we actually had a really wonderful back and forth, you know, with different drafts of this, and they provided us comments, and some of the things we took into account and some of the things we didn't because we felt like they weren't in the best interest of the entire town. And so I think, I would like to throw it to Ms. Tintoclas, if I could, to kind of discuss what, what she has heard about things that might be, that they would have liked to see a little bit differently, if that's okay, Mr. Moderator, through you.
Ms. Tintoclas, please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. In terms of the chamber and the business community, they provided input, however, in terms of a vote, obviously, we weren't, they were not asked. What the zoning proposal before you with the upgrades, it does elevate some of the demands on a developer for landscape and urban design. And as we stated, from the property owner's perspective, it is not out of market, meaning that term, this is common in a normal kind of request by communities. However, it generally does come with a little bit more design effort if you're doing a redevelopment project. So we are asking developers to up their game a bit when they come to do projects in Burlington. So that is true, but we believe that to be part of the greater value we are creating here, especially where we're directing private investment in areas that we are looking for in the mixed-use infill. That's why these are kind of, again, strategic steps. We set the tone, we express what we want, and that signals to, you know, our developers what is expected from the beginning. So also, those are not surprises that come up in over negotiation, so they can build it into their plan. So that is what we've heard and how we've incorporated it, to keep it balanced for our community.
Further questions, discussions from the body? Seeing nothing? We'll put this to a vote, two-thirds. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? There being six votes against, it's a clear two-thirds majority, and Article thirty-four passes. Brings us to Article thirty-five. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant to see if the town will amend zoning bylaws, Article two, definitions. Liz, I guess you're still on tap.
Last one. Last one, all right. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am going to be presenting a zoning article on modernizing the use table. So this is my world, not your world, so we have Newtown meeting members, so what am I talking about when I'm saying we're modernizing the use table? So what you see before you, this is just a portion of our zoning map, and each one of those colors refers to a different zoning district, and in each one of those zoning districts, you can do things, certain things, and you can't do other things. So if you think about that map in your head, this is the, the big red, red spot in the middle, that's Burlington Mall, so that orients you a little bit. So those zoning districts refer to this zoning use table, which is in the zoning bylaw, and it determines what uses are allowed there. So you can't, so the RO zones are single-family residential, so you can't have a mini golf place in a residentially zoned area, is, is essentially what that means. And so this is, that's, that's what our zoning use table is, and we're looking to modernize it. It hasn't had a thorough overhaul in many years, and it's time, I think. So, so this is a sample that... So what's the purpose of this? So we are visually streamlining the use table, we're removing obsolete uses, and by removing them, I mean we're moving them into the definitions, we're not removing anything, it's just being kind of changed, it's being moved to a different spot. We're adding modern uses to be competitive, and we're consolidating related uses. So, so visually streamlining, so we are truncating verbose uses and moving them to the definition. So the red side is the existing uses, as you can see, they're very long paragraph length, things about what you can do and can't do. And so a lot of, all, a lot of that language is being moved to the definition section, and the new use table will look like what's on the blue side, which is a lot, you know, a lot more easy to read, makes a lot more sense. And so we're not losing any uses, we're just moving them to, to a different spot. Again, removing obsolete uses, kind of a misnomer. We still have things called out, dance halls and sanatoria and retail dealers and grain and animal feed, and those aren't going away, they're just being moved to the definition section to kind of streamline, streamline the use table. And then, so we're also consolidating related uses. And so, you know, you have all these offices, and they, they list out all the different types of offices, but instead of listing them out, let's just call them professional offices, and if you need more detail, go to the definition and look up professional offices, and everything will be listed there. Main reason, if somebody is coming to town and wants to do something, seeing a table with simple terms is a lot easier than having to read through every single line. This is kind of the final slide on this, we're adding modern uses to be more competitive. Things that are in our use table, people can do a Google search, and it's going to come up. And so we want to be competitive with other towns and surrounding areas, so, you know, we're adding things like collaborative workspaces, people who work from home, they want to get out of their home office and work somewhere where there are other people around. Brewery, distillery, cidery, wineries, another use that is going to be in the zone, in the table, shared creative space, work industrial arts facility, and food hall, public markets. So again, these are all kind of economic development maneuvering to add new uses. And that concludes my portion of this, Mr. Moderator, so I would like, again, you to recognize Ms. Sutherland and Ms. Tintoclas in that order, if you please.
Certainly, Ms. Sutherland, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jessica Sutherland, Vice Chair, Planning Board. Same story, again, businesses, their lawyers, planning department, all have to sift through a lot of words to try to figure out this business with their application, what would they be under? Some of the uses are very similar, but under separate sections, and so the idea is that sounds like an office building, let me look at the definition, seems like it fits. Simplifying it for time and money purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Ms. Tintocles, please.
Just in addition to those comments, I think part of what the zoning document is done around search engine optimization, we are also trying to telegraph the fact that these users are welcome and allowed in Burlington. So these documents are searched online, we put these online, and that also facilitates kind of what's possible. We talk about what we can do today, about supporting our businesses. Generally speaking, creating, you know, explicit language and having better definitions offers more opportunity for tenancy, so creating more occupancy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gaffney, a vote of the Planning Board, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Planning Board, again, unanimously approved this 7-0, and I'd like to thank the planning staff. This is, this is a big, heavy lift, and I think it really came out great, so thank you to the unit, to your staff. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Land Use Committee, Mr. Waddila.
Dave Waddila is Land Use Committee Chair. The zoning director indicated this article would be withdrawn at the Land Use Committee, where we're going to take a vote, so there was no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Waddila. Ms. Ellis. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Shari Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We voted 6-1 in favor.
Thank you. Select Board, Mr. Spail.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in support of the article.
Thank you. Discussion from the body? Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I'm freezing to death in here, so this won't be very long. This is, I think applicants, in many ways, live and die by the use tables. And so you're making all of this much more navigable and easy to understand and whatnot, but you've also added things, made some changes, particularly in the modernization and new uses. And so I'm going to vote for this, but my gut is, it's not that easy to get all of this really right for the average applicant. There probably are going to be things in here that they're going to have problems with, and I don't know what they are, and I suspect you don't know what they are, which means you've got to be open, keep your ears to the ground when someone is pushing back a little bit. They may not be just whining or trying to get something that they shouldn't get, that could be a problem, and that's when you get into trouble with this stuff. So I'm just asking the Planning Board and the building department, be really sensitive to the applicants when they're trying to do things. And I'll give you an example. On the previous one, but we did the parking stuff, I really have had input, completely unsolicited and almost shockingly, like over a drink, from people that own businesses in the town. And one of the concerns they've got is on this shared use concept. And what they're saying is, I don't think it's going to work, especially as proprietors change hands, or the business migrates into a slightly different pattern, and suddenly they've got a parking problem, and that's a disaster for them. So there are worries. So I voted for that, I'll vote for this, but it's not a slam dunk. You've got to stay on top of this stuff, or the business people are going to have trouble. Thank you.
Comment?
Yes, I, thank you. Point well taken. It is something that we are looking to do. I don't think, you know, I don't think of this document as stagnant. I think that we're always going to be looking at ways to update this and change this and be more, be more mindful of the business community. We do listen to them, we do hear them. I want to assure you, I don't, I don't view this as stagnant, and as we hear things, we will, we're not opposed to, you know, doing housekeeping amendments and staying up to date with what we need to do. So thank you, your point is well taken.
Ms. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to point out two things here. If you guys look at the 4.2.4.7 data center, that's a new use term. But first, I want to say, this is a good thing for our town. I really support this. But I just have two things I noticed I really need to bring it up. So with data center, we said open space, town center, and the residential area is pretty much we open the rest of town for data center. And data centers are well-known to be water-consuming, intense facilities. Liz told us that we already have some in town, but, you know, they get really hot. In order to cool it off, they consume tons and tons of water. We already have water problem in our town. And also, like, for a medium-sized data center, they could easily consume like 200,000 gallon water a day. So I'm just saying, like, while we're doing all this, we really also think about, like, do we really want to do this? And we need to be careful what we really open our tongue for, what we get ourselves into. And this water, when I'm talking about the consuming water, it's literally like evaporate water, it's gone. So this is something we need to think about, like, in the future and take it seriously. If there's a medium-sized data center coming to the town, what are we going to do? I just want to say that. And then... Hello? Oh, yeah. So second one, Liz consolidated a couple of things into 4.2.2.2 and 4.2.2.10. Originally, no, no, I would say, like, you know, current existing uses, they're no and a special permit, but in the new use table, it says yes in the open space. So would you like to make an amendment on that, or you're just going to say we can?
I can't make an amendment? I'm not, I don't think I'm allowed to make amendments.
So what do we do? I don't think we should have those in open space.
Okay. Yes, so I think that by definition, they wouldn't be allowed anyway, even if it's a yes in the use table, the law still says open space isn't allowed. So it would be a housekeeping amendment that would have to come back in September that I would not be opposed to doing. Okay. Thanks.
Let's put this to a vote, then. All those in favor? Go ahead. Mimi.
Mimi Bix Island, Precinct 1. I was just going to suggest that these points that Z highlighted are really important, and perhaps we postpone a voting on this until that housekeeping is made. Not going to be popular, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
There was not a formal motion made. She said, maybe we should.
I make the motion.
I shouldn't have called on you. Motion to postpone. Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. Like I said before, this is going to need cleanup. It's obvious that it is, and if you get hung up on, I mean, that's a real error that you probably found, but I'm sure there are more. And postponing this for something that you just discovered tonight, in my opinion, is a bad idea. What you should do is study the things some more, as if you were a developer or whatever, bring all your stuff forward to the Planning Board, and get on the docket, a housekeeping thing, and then bring it back to Town Meeting for Amendments. That's the orderly way to do it, it can be done pretty quickly. Postponing this actually makes it worse. You're not even going to know what's wrong with it. So I would not postpone. Thank you.
Anything further on this motion? Okay, all those in favor of postponing? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion is defeated. Brings us back to the main motion. Are there any further questions on the main motion? Okay, so all those in favor of Article 35? Thank you. All those opposed? I see three opposed. It's clearly a 2/3 majority? The motion passes. Hold on, I got, I got four thank yous to read here for the folks who have been running the AV for us, Tessie Schultz, Tom, Thomas Peters, Chase Jackman, and Cole Weisner. And for some reason, Amy thinks we should thank her staff also. Wonderful. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll see you June 10th.